And I would urge that we look at that.
That's one of the other technologies that's available.
Because I think that at least until such time as the technology to prevent mischief is as good as the technology to do mischief, and we're not there yet. We're not there yet. I think we will always need to have a paper backup that someone can hand count if there's a challenge.
That's the problem with that specific technology.
Right, and so just for my two cents, I would urge us to be looking at the form of this that does, I understand, produces an immediate ballot that a person then folds and puts in, they count, puts in a box, they count it from the disk.
Correct.
But if there's a challenge, they have in the box all of the paper versions of what people said they voted.
Yes, we've seen that.
Okay.
And again, the cost is about comparable.
Personally, colleagues, from my point of view, what I understand about ability of people to electronically do mischief is enormous. If they can break into systems that have the type of security as the Pentagon and so forth, someone's going to figure out how to do this. And until we have the technology that provides safeguards, I think we need to have, I certainly support the idea of having these electronic machines, but I would also urge that we have them in a way that you have a paper backup.
One thing I might add, the current versions are in a standalone mode, so they're not voting like over the Internet or something, but you're absolutely right.
I understand that, but if I am a good hacker, and I can come in and I can change everything on the machine I vote on, and I have 40 friends who can do that on 40 machines, we could change the memory on that disk.
I understand, I just wanted to clarify.
Mr. Holden, you have the floor.
Well, just to think, if they had this technology in Florida right now, we would not be having, they would not be having that discussion. Jeb would have taken care of everything.
Mr. Holden, that is a possibility. I think you have to be very careful, as you do with our vote tally system, that there's an independent audit process that asserts what?
Well, you gotta have a record, number one. Number two, I'm just an old timer, I liked the horse and buggy days, especially when things aren't going right in aircraft. So I just want you to know that computers, you can give them a virus. I just think we have a major election, state of California, with this system in place, and the power goes off, shuts down, people can't go in and vote. They gotta go to work, come back, they'll be voting at midnight, the court's gonna be extending the time. It just is not gonna work for our time, not in this century. This century, by the way, this is too, the new one. And I would say-
I won't be here in the new century.
Well, I'm gonna be around to check it out, I'll be looking out from above. But I gotta tell you, now, this is, in my view, not a good idea. It's, not only is it costly, which I don't care about if we can get the right answer, and make sure that every voter's counting. The other problem that we've had with this new invention, we have the punch. You also talked about the stock, the card stock. And what you really meant by that is that the perforation on the stock was not sufficient to allow, permit the stylus to push the tab out, is that correct?
I wasn't here, but it was a problem with the ballot stock itself.
My time is running, the hourglass is moving. Yeah, that's correct.
Correct.
Because you don't have the perforation, which is the same thing they're complaining about, you know where. Where the perforation was not made sufficient to permit the stylus to push out the tab. Now, I just wanted to put that on the table, but what's more important about us here, when this new invention came out in 1970, with the Connie, with this punch that we know it today, you have, you know how to do it, they have a header card, you can take the header card, the header card designate where the precinct is, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, then you also have a verification count where you put in the tape to verify that what you're counting is accurate?
Correct.
You do that run the night before the election, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, now, but you still can, my friends, have some kind of a problem associated with this.
Correct.
You know, and it's been working for me when I win, and it doesn't work for me when I lose.
Correct.
But I gotta tell you-
I'm well aware of that argument, Mr. Holden. I've been watching it on CNN.
But I gotta tell you this, that it's the best we know, is what we have, and there is some confidence in what we have. Now, you talk about the hand counts, which we've had here, while we've had the hand counts. The fact, the computer count only gives us the best guess, the best run possible, not being able to count the tabs being pushed back, or other problems associated with the count, is that right?
Yeah.
If you have a hanging Chad problem, and it closes-
I won't speak again, Mr. President.
I don't care, but your time is up. Let him finish answering the question.
If you have the Chad problem, as apparently they've had in Florida, the ballot will not be read because light does not pass through it. Now, we have a little different rules. I'm not sure we're gonna get into the discussion on the dimples, the pregnant-
But you do a hand count anywhere.
We do a hand count, but our rules are far different than what you're seeing in Florida, relative to how much has to be punched out on that card. The same rules that we use.
I think Jackie made some very good points about the electronic portion of it, there has to be some other record, so that we do have accountability if it's necessary. The only question is if it's written or punched. Now, one of the problems with the punch thing, and I've been involved in a recount or two, and where you had to look at the Chads, the way you saw some of those people on television doing, and our regulation here, I believe, with the LA County Registrar, has always been that if the Chad is three quarters out, they counted it. But if it wasn't three quarters out, they didn't. So it was a question of intent. Now, if we, I don't know if this electronic, this would be a screen-type situation where you actually touch the screen?
Yes.
Okay, what happens if somebody touches the screen twice accidentally?
The machine will prompt you that you cannot do that, you must vote only for one candidate.
All right, now, somebody misses it and doesn't vote on one particular, is somebody gonna be able to say, "Well, they voted straight Republican, so therefore that has to be a Republican vote on the one they missed"?
Anything's possible.
That's happening, by the way, in Florida.
Anything's possible.
Not just with the Republicans, by the way.
Again, I think you'd have to have some other evidence that that's what happened.
Okay, that's where the record, that's where a written record, the disk itself is only one phase of it. There has to be something that people can go back and actually look at, that has a texture to it, and has, you know, where it is, where it can be manually done.
And let me explain something. Neither Connie McCormick nor I are suggesting that we go to an electronic voting system at this point. The early voting, the touchscreen, was an experiment. We need to look at these kinds of systems, but I think we're a couple, given the cost, I think we're-
I understand. I was gonna suggest that one of the things, I don't know whether we have a definite policy on what counts as far as Chads are concerned.
Yes, we do.
We do have that in place, and it says I suggested?
The Secretary of State in '91 came out with what you've just described. Three corners have to be removed.
Right.
With Councilman Holden, we had three sides had to be dislodged, so you could have two corners still in place, but you had to have that Chad hanging down. Three sides of the four sides had to be removed.
In other words, three corners didn't have to be, three sides had to be removed.
You had to be, yes, correct.
I see.
And we will republish those, so everybody knows prior to the election what rules are gonna apply.
What I'm gonna say is this, because of what's happening nationally, we should not necessarily rush to judgment and spend a lot of money that we may have better purposes for, because we haven't had that problem here in Los Angeles, or in California. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of council, I'm gonna try and bring us back to Los Angeles. And in doing that, I want us to understand that I honestly believe some of the questions that are being asked in this election are gonna be asked in this city. When the city clerk talked about previous recounts, he omitted the Alarcon Hall race, in which the result did change because of a recount. And Councilman Alarcon was elected over Laia Hall, and it was a very contested race. We saw the same thing with the Katz-Alarcon Citeo race. But there was a real close election. I think that this next election facing us in the primary in April, with six mayoral candidates at this time, with the resources that they're using, and the discussion that's going on, you're gonna have a very close race. And it's gonna be very few votes that are gonna determine who are in the runoffs. I also think when you look at the number of council districts that are open, you're gonna have quite a few candidates running, in those councilmatic seats. My primary concern is how we're using technology of today to improve our voter eligibility rosters, to understand how it is that we can encourage more Angelenos to register to participate in that election. I don't know how technology's being used to get more people registered to vote, to purge those people who shouldn't be in a household voting, who no longer live in the city. I mean, what are the processes that we're doing to do that? But I think that the questions are rightfully being asked at the end of November, knowing that we're gonna have an April election. And so how is it that we're gonna use technology to encourage registration throughout the city of Los Angeles, to enhance that voter participation, and to limit the reality of people who might not be living in the city voting, and because they've been, they reestablished their residence? Those are things that have to be asked. At one time, I asked the question, "Why is it that when someone goes and opens up for new water and power, can't get a voter registration form?" Well, that was a complicated question for us. That was a difficult question for us to put into a systematic approach. And I'm just asking how we're dealing with the question of registration and technology, and how we're preparing for that for the April elections.
Relative to registration of new voters, the county and my office have attempted to make sure that at all public counters in the city, that registration forms are available for people to fill out. We also partnered with the county on a new registration system, but that really assists us in processing absentees, make its digitized signature, so it's a much quicker process. The other issue you mentioned is there have been law changes that allow voters within the county of Los Angeles to move in the last 28 days and vote in their new precinct. That's gonna have to still be handled through provisional ballots, Councilman, where we'll check that against the registration records probably after the election. There's a new state law that allows people to register 15 days before election. My anticipation is that we're gonna have a considerably higher number of provisionals, and our job will be to make sure that the precinct workers do not turn anybody away, allow them to vote provisionally, and then after Election Day, we can sort that registration stuff out. But it's, we've already, we're already aware of it, and we're the first to be affected by the 15-day change.
Right, but I can't register through the Internet.
You talked too long, and then he wants to ask another question.
I know, I know. I'll shut up. I'll check with Connie on that.
That's what happens in Padle, yeah. Ms. Zakowski, did you want to be heard? Or Mrs. Chick? Mrs. Chick, did you want to be heard again?
No, I cut it off.
Good. That's a best topic. I'll cut him off. Mr. Holden.
President, the TV is on, they're recording this. But I will say, however, that my, so if you think I know something about this process, my early experience in 1970 was not a very good one. There was a guy named Rex Layton, he was a registrar recorder for the Connie, is that correct?
No, Rex Layton was the city clerk of the city of Los Angeles.
Rex Lay, oh, that's right, city clerk. There was a guy over there saying, well, I had trouble with him, too. But the other guy was-
You lost that race?
Yeah. But, and the Connie, when those machines first came out, in 1970, there was a guy, you know, running for Congress, and they took the header card and put it into a district where there was no primary contest, and that congressional election transferred and transferred the voting, because there was no contest, people elected to vote for the incumbent. No contest. Transferred the ballots, changed the header card, counted the votes here, as if the votes actually took place in the district, which they did not. They were voting for an office for Congress in Los Angeles, the office was, in Pasadena, Altadena, Monrovia, et cetera. The information is still available. And all they did then, because this is not the first thing, they talked about stealing election, they took the header card, put it into the precinct here, and the computer wouldn't even detect where the votes actually came from, because the header card tells them how they count the votes, and that number, 52 on the ballot, was constant in the area where there was no contest, and in the area where there was a contest. And the computer can't even detect that. Isn't that right, Ms. Gary? With the header card, the header card tells them where it came from, is that correct?
The header card identifies a precinct.
That's right.
The ballot itself has the ballot group on it that would count the ballots. So if you have ballots that are not part of a ballot group, in other words, people are coming in to vote for CD-10, and they really should be voting for CDA.
But the ballot group has 52, the number 52, the same as in the area where the header card, the precinct being counted, the same thing. The ballot group-
A ballot group constitutes everyone that gets to vote on the same races.
I know that.
The header card controls allocation of ballots to precincts.
I know that. And the fact of the matter is that in Pasadena, in Altadena, in those areas, they were voting for me, running for Congress, I didn't live there, they told me the polling places, I was running over there, they told me where the polling places were, I went, and I'll tell you right now, I broke open the kit, the box, the voting ballot box, my name was on the ballot in those areas, and that's how they transferred it with the header card. Now, the courts refused to act on it. First election that I know where this took place, where you were using this system, and they didn't act, and didn't correct the problem. And I know the problem well, and it's well documented. This is not against you. I'm just saying, when you bring a new system in, this is what can really happen. We've debugged it, people are watching that as a technique for stealing elections.
Nate?
And now we're gonna try and have this happen again, so I don't want this new stuff. Ms. Goldberg is correct, and Mr. Ferrara is correct, and my time is up.
Mr. Holden, did you win the farm vote, or Doug?
Huh?
Okay. There's no, Mr. Padilla wants to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like I said-
So much for a brief presentation.
There's gonna be some questions, there are gonna be some issues, and at the top of that list is the issues of privacy and security. So by no means are we there today, we won't be there tomorrow, but technology is an increasing part of our daily lives, more and more, and someday the day will very likely come, that we hold our elections in some electronic form, maybe not exclusively, but they will certainly be part of the process. I wanted to formally amend the report to, when the report does come back, to the committee to include an analysis of what happened here in the city of Los Angeles, also known San Bernardino, they had electronic voting, so sort of lessons learned from there as we venture forward here in Los Angeles, both the city and the county, and also to begin to look at the feasibility and the economics involved with going forward with this new technology, with due consideration to what's going on at the state level, both in the legislature and at the Secretary of State's office, to fund projects or pilot projects in this arena as well. With that, thank you, colleagues, for your lively discussion, and I ask for your support.
Okay, what do we do, adopt this?
I'm not gonna say anything else.
Okay, Mr. Padilla moves, prepare the call roll. Is there any opposition to this?
Mr. Savard is calling for a formal recount in the 54th, Mr. President. Yes, and he wants Nate to be his-
He'll win the farm vote for you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, let's see if it'll work. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number nine, Mr. President, is on the desk. The committee report has been distributed.
Item nine. Mr. Holden? Where's the city attorney?
Carmel Sella, Special Assistant City Attorney.
Good morning, Carmen Hawkins, Deputy City Attorney, Land Use Division.
Okay, we have item nine.
Well, the city attorney's setting up some guidelines, and I think that's important information for, at least for me, and the public.
We reported to the Housing and Community Redevelopment Committee last week on a variety of issues. I'm happy to go through the report and answer any questions you have.
That's what I want you to do.
We were asked to report on the status of the REAP and HEAP amendments. We reported on that issue, and that these amendments are ready for council consideration. We further reported on civil and criminal enforcement. We've reported on the substandard, the slum housing task force cases.
At what point will you cite somebody for criminal violation? You report on code and criminal enforcement. How would you enforce it? What would you do?
Cases are referred to us by a variety of enforcement departments.
Such as case, ranging from what to what?
Building and safety, fire department, housing department.
What are they alleging when they refer those cases to you?
It could range from ceiling falling, or other substandard conditions.
That's a criminal, that's a crime.
If it meets the criteria of-
There's a threshold, what is the threshold?
It's determined on a case-by-case basis, Councilman.
So you can use your own discretion?
Discretion within the law, yes.
Oh, that's, I heard that before. Go, carry on.
We were further asked to report on receiverships and the possibility of expanding this program. We indicated that that was an idea that is very much in keeping with expanding our efforts, and we discussed the use of outside counsel on a pilot basis to increase the number of receivership cases that we handle. And we will be reporting back further pursuant to the committee direction.
Where do we get the money to pay for this?
That needs to be determined, and we'll work with ORS and the CLA's office to develop all those financial issues.
Well, when will this go into effect, if at all?
We're reporting back to the committee in 30 days pursuant to the committee direction.
So it will not go into effect unless until you get the money to-
Unless, and until we report back and fund the funds.
So is the money that you need contingent on the fact that you have this case not pending before the California Supreme Court, court enforcement?
They're very much distinct issues.
I know you need the money, though.
And in addition, I should point out that we are doing receiverships within our office, and we can certainly increase the number of cases that we're currently handling in-house.
If you had additional funds?
That's not correct. We can accommodate more cases in-house, but were we to increase extensively the number of cases, we would suggest the use of outside counsel.
Well, then, if you do what you can do in-house, and forget about outside counsel, then you get more money.
That's right.
Well, they didn't say that yet, they're just gonna come back.
Ms. Goldberg? She should've been doing that. Ms. Goldberg, you have the floor.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the council, the report number nine, which is on your desk, is a very comprehensive look at all of the various things that we're doing in code enforcement. The City Attorney's Department, the ORS, the CLA, and the Housing Department all came together with the Blue Ribbon Committee on Nuisance Abatement Program, the SNAP, they call it, CNAP, I guess, to talk about how to deal with the persistent, not the occasional, not the, "I didn't know how to take care of my building," not the, "I'm not working very well on keeping it up because we've had some setbacks." But the folks that systematically, Mr. Holden, systematically, intentionally, and willfully drain money out of buildings and keep people in substandard conditions as a business practice, I know, I'm just saying, as a business practice. And we, I'm not saying you aren't, I'm just saying, we had this discussion, we had a lengthy discussion. The City Attorney's Office, I think, was excellent in bringing up the things that it would take to go beyond where we are now. What we said, though, was is that because there are some needs to discover how to move more quickly and more effectively against certain of these notoriously well-known slumlords, that every one of you in this horseshoe could probably name the one or two or three in your district, or in some cases, more than that, that you know who they are, that it would take perhaps some additional resources, but rather than just say, "Do it," we said, "Go study it with all of the people, including the Blue Ribbon Committee." And before the budget process begins, come back and tell us realistically, how do we go after these notorious bad guys, and make this an effective, more effective program? And that's what the report before you suggests.
Okay, Mrs. Chick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm very appreciative of now bringing in this other piece, and I hate to refer to the City Attorney's Office as the other piece, but it's a very key piece-
There are worse things, Councilman.
It's a very key piece of code enforcement and of this whole program. So I just wanted to focus briefly on item two. I was very pleased to see that we're seeking to coordinate and to better understand both the differences and the potential synergy between the Housing Department's code enforcement program and citywide nuisance abatement program. And I hope on number two, that it's not only how LA Housing Department and CNAP will handle buildings that have both drug activity and habitability problems, but also that there'll be a sense of how these two programs interface. And quite frankly, we should be looking at how LA HD's program, CNAP, and PACE, Building and Safety's PACE teams, work together. One of the biggest problems citywide, colleagues, on code enforcement is that we have it parceled out, we have it in different departments, and the trick has been getting the departments to work together. My understanding is that the City Attorney's City Nuisance Abatement Program has been extremely successful in coordinating these departments. So maybe there's even something to be learned from the citywide nuisance abatement program that will work here. And I think that was the only thing that I wanted to highlight. Oh, and then also on page two of the report, towards the bottom, it talks about the ongoing problem of expediting and going after the worst cases. And we're always hearing why we can't do something instead of why we can, and I still am not willing to accept that we can't find a way to rewrite the rules, be fair, be legal, and have the ability to not have these things drag on.
And that's exactly right, and it's reflected in our report, where if we were to develop the guidelines to distinguish those cases, the worst cases, we do believe that we could create criteria to bypass the administrative hearing.
Good. Okay, thank you.
If not, prepare the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hernandez.
One of the things I didn't see here was the carrot. I'm seeing the stick, and I just wanted to ask the question, because a majority of these landlords tend to be mom-and-pop operations. Very few are that bad landlord, slumlord, who basically has taken all the equity out, and whose intention is ultimately to abandon the building and leave everybody stranded. What have we been doing in the process of educating landlords as to what their responsibilities are, and what kinds of resources exist, to try and upfront give them an understanding of what it is to be a landlord, and what kinds of things they have to do, and what rights they have in regards to their tenants, and what they should be sharing with their tenants?
Councilman, perhaps the Housing Department could better answer that question, but what we did discuss in committee was enhancing the education, so that landlords have a better understanding of the laws, in particular on rent increases and the like. But absolutely, that's an area that we're looking at and working with the Housing Department on.
Is anybody here from the Housing Department to give us that perspective? Gary?
Gary Penny, Joe Manager of the Housing Department. We have been working with the city attorney on that perspective.
Uh-huh. What's that mean? I mean, is there a program coming out? And again, I think that the less cases the city attorney has to deal with, the better, but is there, I just found out I was a landlord, and I'm asking different kinds of questions now, right? And I found out because what used to be my uncle living behind me is now my tenant, supposedly, and- supposedly, and now I'm a landlord. And that means I have certain responsibilities, and I want to understand those responsibilities. But I'm also talking about those six-unit apartment buildings and those kinds of issues. How do people understand what those responsibilities are and what resources exist?
We've been putting out flyers in both the rent stabilization ordinance that the units have to be registered with our annual billing. We also have flyers for our code enforcement program. We've done outreach. We have tenant outreach contractors for the code import, code enforcement program. And we've worked with both the landlords and the tenants on that.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And so that most of your prosecutions are very few, small landlords?
I think there's a range, Councilman.
Uh-huh. Do you have any idea?
I do not.
Okay.
I think most of the prosecutions today have been larger units, but we have a backlog of cases, criminal cases, that we've asked the additional staff to process and get to the city attorney, and those cover the spectrum.
Well, I, for example, know how many cases you have at REAP, I mean, that are still open as opposed to closed.
I, I don't have that with me, but I can certainly provide that to you.
Right. Well, I know that in my district, there was almost 5,000 units, and I was wondering how that was working. And either way, I just, I'm more interested in that aspect, and if I can help in dealing with that, that kind of an issue, I'd like to be able to work with my office in that regard.
Okay. Anyone else want to be heard? We have item number nine before us. Motion is required, so Mr. Hernandez moved. Prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. The next item?
Item number 15, call special by Councilmember Goldberg.
Ms. Goldberg?
Yes, we have. 15A is amended, and I would move it.
Anybody want to be heard on 11? I mean, 15. If not, you heard the motion by Ms. Goldberg. Prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith on that. I'm gonna forthwith everything today because... Next item.
Item number 16, call special. There's an amendment that has been distributed.
Mr. President, with regard to item 16, I move the Budget and Finance Committee report, which is A, as amended by 16C, which has been distributed around people's desks. 16C is at the request of the department.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion made by Mr. Fier? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number 17 is still on the desk. The city attorney has brought in the findings.
Can we... Ms. Goldberg, who is the city attorney, where's the city attorney?
Um...
Here she comes.
And I think we also need the planning department to come forward.
Is the planning department here?
Yes. In our letter to you about this ordinance, we've suggested that you adopt, if you're in favor of this ordinance, adopt the recommendations that are in the department's letter, as well as some findings that the department's going to put on the record here at this time.
Hello?
Want to make the findings first, then I'd like to speak when they're done.
Yes. Again, Frank Epplehart, a member of the planning department staff, and with me is Lynn Harper. There have been some concern about some of the environmental findings, and I would like to enter into the record a particular finding. The EIR for this project identified a number of impacts which would be significant unless mitigation measures were improved, were imposed. Only the transportation impacts would be of significance. And in that light, I would like to make the following finding. The EIR identified significant transportation impacts from the framework. Listed, it listed a number of transportation improvements, including those of the responsibility of MTA, Caltrans, as well as the City of Los Angeles. While it was demonstrated that adequate funding over the next 10 years would be available for these, these projects had not been specifically funded, and therefore, the impacts must remain as being considered as being unmitigated. In this light, the city council ought to adopt a statement of overriding consideration in that the anticipated growth for this area would occur as projected, and that the needed housing parks and other infrastructure needs for the planned area were of such significance as that they outweighed the whole, on the whole, the fact that the mitigation of the aforementioned impacts cannot be assured. And that was a substance of what we wanted to enter into the record.
Thank you very much. Ms. Harper, did you want to say anything?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to thank the city attorney's office, the planning department, and my staff, and the more than 300 or 400 people who have worked for two years on this particular project in the community. Particularly, I want to acknowledge Ms. Harper's contribution and other folks who have participated. This has been an enormous task, colleagues, and I, I will tell you that if I had one thing that would thrill me as we leave to have happened in my last week, it is this project. Because this project proposes for the Vermont and Western Station neighborhood areas, a transit-oriented development for the area around four of the construction, newly constructed metro stations. As you all recall my moaning and groaning as this went on, that what doesn't kill you make you stronger, maybe. The MTA is a good example of that. We were able to secure some funding that will deal with about 2.2 miles in which an estimated 50,000 people currently live. It envisions the hospital expansions of Kaiser and Children's Hospital, and perhaps Tenet as well. It envisions local job incentives, and it has an implementation strategy, which I will, if you're interested, be glad to share with you. But I, I just want to say that, that these kinds of processes are critical, because we have a general plan framework, which provides really for increased density along transportation corridors. What the folks that I represent want to make clear to this council through me is that they are urban dwellers who do not object to increase density, even if they're the only parts of the city being asked to increase density. As long as you give them the amenities that go with it, and that to just permit, to just permit by zoning, more and more people to live in areas that have no parks and overcrowded schools and no libraries is not a tolerable land use policy. Now, this does not, this does not solve the problem. It is really a step. But I urge you, I urge all of you, particularly under the leadership of Mr. Burnson and Plum, his continued leadership, I urge all of you, as you look at density questions, insist, ensure, demand, require that there be open space, that there be libraries. This is a community that voted to support a McDonald's because it would be the only playground in the area. It's true. I kid you not. Now, that's just not acceptable. That cannot be the only place children can play. I appreciate just a couple more seconds, and then I'll be done. It is absolutely critical that the quality of life in the denser parts of the city be a higher priority. And that is in parks first, in Prop K, in any form that we can. We must say to those people who are accepting the notion that their areas will continue to grow, that we believe the quality of life for them is just as important as in those neighborhoods where there are single-family dwellings and the park is the front yard and the backyard, which is larger than most of the parks in my district. Now, that has to happen, and I appreciate your support of this today. Let me just make one minor technical correction on 6C. There's just a typographical error that needs to be changed. It should read in the third line, "In which the plan's provisions may be inconsistent with existing zones and height districts." And it's just, so I just want to make sure we have that changed for the record. So, I thank again publicly all of you who've sweated blood and spent many endless hours. This is, to me, a job well done by everybody. Thank you to the planning department, the city attorney's office, and to my staff as well.
Thank you. Mr. Burnson?
Yes, members of the council, first of all, I want everybody to recognize the tenacity of Councilwoman and Assemblywoman-elect Goldberg in, in bringing this to this council. Not only was she dealing with a severe problem, but a timeframe. She wanted to see this done while she was still here. So Jackie, congratulations on that.
Thank you for your help.
Yeah. Let me just say also that this reflects a model for what is the future of our city. Because, because as we deal with the, with the congestion that is going to continue to occur with the, with the huge influx of population that's coming into our region, we are going to have to depend more and more upon public transportation and use of, improvement of transportation corridors. And the use of higher-density residential is what is in the framework for our general plan. We put it there several years ago, and we did it, and Jackie was very quick to realize that. And she recognized one other thing, that it didn't necessarily deal with livable communities, as well as getting residential use and business close to those transportation centers and corridors. The only reservation I had about this, and I still have some concerns, but I went along because I think it's aiming in the right direction. I'm concerned about it discouraging the development of market-rate housing along that area. And that may, there may have to be some adjustments made. I have long felt that the inner city and areas that were already developed did not get the benefit, benefit of the Quinby Act, which helped districts like my own, districts in the San Fernando Valley, and so forth. And there possibly needs to be some adjustments made so we can provide funding for areas that are already built. And maybe this is one way to do it, I don't know. I hope it is. We also, one addition that I made, and I think Jackie also did not, did not disagree, that there needs to be also the encouragement for the development of office and other types of job-creating things along these corridors and residential centers as well. So I want to congratulate the community, which was very solid in working for this, the staff that worked very closely with our committee and with Ms. Goldberg, and I would urge an i vote. Thank you.
Ms. Goldberg, before we, before we continue on, this is a public hearing item, and there's one person that wants to be heard, or several that filed, Reverend Jeff Carr. Would you please take the... I'm sorry, I didn't get to you sooner.
That's okay. Thank you very much, Councilman. As the folks are coming forward, on behalf of the Parks First Coalition, we want to say thank you, especially to Councilwoman Goldberg for her leadership on finally getting us to a point in our neighborhood where we're gonna get what we deserve, which is more parks. I lived in this neighborhood and worked here for almost 14 years. And all during this time, I've heard young people and families cry out for more parks, more open space. And it's only these kind of forward-looking planning kind of documents that are ever gonna help us get caught up to the point where we have the kind of amenities that we deserve in our neighborhood. I also want to thank Councilwoman Missakowski and Councilmember Burnson and the Plum Committee for their unanimous support, and Councilman Hernandez, who wasn't there that day, but we knew he was supportive of it. And especially the city attorney and the planning department for your work. I know how long it takes for things to get done, and I know that this was rushed, and all of us want to say especially thank you, because our neighborhood's gonna be a better place to live. And I just want to thank you, and I want to urge your i vote, all of you, to do, to do this day. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend Carr. Ms. Missakowski?
I think a lot has been talked about already, and congratulations and appreciation given where they're justly deserved on this plan. But I wanted to speak more for the members of the council to really take a close look at this plan, because not only is great what has been accomplished in this community, with this community and the department, but this is incredibly a model, I think, for all of the rest of the city. We talk about specific plans in certain areas, and they've always been sort of a community against developers, putting limits, putting restrictions. This is so much more than that. It is really saying what can be and what should be. I, I see things in this plan that I've never seen before in city planning. There are areas where there are opportunity areas, opportunity areas for an urban village, opportunity areas for a college center, opportunity areas for an industrial park. And it's really focusing and targeting on what can be and how it can be. But I think the most incredible part about this is I look at, and I really think that the idea that's exciting, is the shared streets, where it says where we have made a commitment, where we have put public investment and subsidy into metro transit on our major corridors. Let's take all the streets around that and say that they should now receive a benefit from the major street taking, being the transportation corridor. Let's make those streets nearby, which are often the shortcut streets, the residential streets through which traffic goes whizzing by. Let's take those and green them. Let's take those and make out of asphalt and concrete green space, thresholds of parks, thresholds of places where people can just sit, can participate, can contemplate, instead of being things you want to move away from because there's just cars parked there, or cars traveling to buy, for, to, traveling by too fast for kids to be a part of. This is really a remarkable plan. I'd like to suggest that members of the council, members of your planning department, your, your own planning staffs, really take a look at this, because this is a model that I hope we can replicate again and again in the city for what good planning with good transit can be about. And I really commend this community for having brought it forward.
Ms. Goldberg?
Yes, I am advised, and I will appreciate the advice. There will be a few trailer ordinances that will come after I am gone, which I hope that you will all help take care of, which deal with the Parks First Trust Fund and the establishment of the regulations. They, the materials have been written, but we haven't gotten them all the way through the process. And so I hope that you will all do my constituents the favor of looking out for them as those come forward. And I just want to thank, really, all of you in the community. This is a small number. We had hundreds and hundreds of people who came to some very long workshops and meetings, which Lynn and others ran, and, and it's really been an incredible process, and I'm very proud of all of your participation. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have, we have item number 17 before us. Prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved.
Item 23, call special by Councilmember Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yeah, Mr. President, members of the council, if we could get some CRA staff to come up. My only intention in, in calling this item special was to try and get some more information. It's a $35 billion bond issuance, and I was wondering how many affordable housing lots are we building for the 35 million?
Don Spivak from the Redevelopment Agency. The item before you is authorization for bond issues of up to $35 million. That number was set when the project potentially was going to include an additional building. It now appears that the tax portion, or the bond portion, will be about $28 million. The total of the project is 209 units. It is a 20% affordable, 80% market project, which means 42 units would be affordable, 167 units would be market units. The project also includes a parking garage.
So the bond issuance of 28 million?
Approximately 28 million.
About 240 units?
209 units and a 278 space parking garage.
So what's that come out per unit?
If you, if you use the unit count against the bond portion, it's $130,000 of bond money per unit. The rest of the project, excluding the garage, is about $170,000 per unit.
And so we're subsidizing market-based housing?
Well, we're providing a financing mechanism that allows the conversion of a building that has been vacant for about 20 years into housing as part of the reuse of buildings of historic and architectural merit.
Right. And, and I know we've had some, some issues in this area in regards to housing and conversion, and what it ultimately ended costing us. I think Premier Towers was the example that we went through before. And I was looking at this model, and it looked similar to the model. And I was trying to find out what are the safeguards so that we don't have that ongoing debate after the fact.
First off, there, there is no city or agency money involved in this project. This is private financing, using tax credits and tax-exempt financing mechanisms. Second, the Premier Towers was a very early example. It was a conversion of buildings into standard apartments. This is a loft conversion. There is an, an ongoing example, the old bank district, the first building of which is, is open and occupied. open and occupied, and the balance of which is nearing completion about a block away. That was a project of approximately $32 million for 240 units, give or take. So it's a slightly higher number in that particular case. But the example of the current approach of doing the loft-style conversion is a much more successful and much more cost-controllable approach than was the case in the very experimental work that was done in the Premier Towers.
So you're saying there is no city investment in this project?
That's correct.
And that's very different from Premier Towers?
Very different. Premier Towers was virtually all city investment.
Okay, and we're basically, are we acting as a conduit?
Yes.
For the bond financing?
That's correct. We are a conduit for bond financing.
And we basically feel secure that the city has no liability in regards to that being that conduit?
That's correct.
Okay. How did we secure that?
These are true housing revenue bonds that are repayable by the developer. There will be a letter of credit issued by East West Bank that guarantees the payment. In turn, the East West Bank letter of credit will have a confirming letter of credit from the Federal Home Loan Bank of San Francisco. That will result in a standard and poor AAA rating. So we're looking at, well, three layers of security here. The developer, payment on the mortgage loan, the letter of credit from East West Bank to ensure that, and then the guarantee from the Federal Home Loan Bank on top of the letter of credit.
Okay, thank you very much. I noticed it was waived out of CRA and age, and I just want to make sure I ask the questions while we have a...
There's a time requirement, because the state allocation expires on December 11th. We're attempting to get into the market immediately.
Okay, thank you.
Members of the council, we have, this is a public hearing item, and John Walsh wants to be heard, and I'll call him right now.
Mr. President, you may recall I was here about four or five months ago, and I predicted the miracle of John Ferraro. And you, this is a miracle, he's with us, and you will be here for another two years.
Thank you.
Because I've spoken right up, I went to the Cardinal. He said you're going to be here for another two years. I am amazed that you are about to vote on a huge transaction of this sort while this agency, the CRA, is under criminal investigation from within. Jerry Sharlin, in fact, there may be some undercover police here, undercover special investigators. I would like to point out that your city attorney candidate, Mr. Fuhr, should be getting up right now instead of walking around while I'm speaking. I notice when there's no TV, people act a little differently. I would like to see, and also Mr. Wax, no votes, a freeze on any major moves with the CRA while they are under criminal investigation, and they are under investigation by even worse, the LA Times. Because I think you're going to see a story in the LA Times about criminality to the CRA very soon, a series of stories, and then you're going to claim you didn't know what was going on. I'm saying right now, the CRA is crooked, ask Jerry Sharlin. In fact, Jerry Sharlin thinks it's more crooked than Wax does, and Jerry Sharlin thinks it's more crooked than our perhaps future city attorney. So I would like you to know, I'm finished, that if you vote for this, Mr. Wax, and if you vote for this, Mr. Fuhr, the San Gabriel Valley will go up, rise up in rebellion against you. And at every meeting you go to, you will ask BS, why are you talking about the criminality that Jerry Sharlin, their own director, is trying to find in the agency? Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing.
Mr. President?
Anybody else want to be heard? Mr. Fuhr?
Yeah, at the risk of alienating the San Gabriel Valley. Yeah, that's right. And you know what, stranger things have happened. No, I just wanted to clarify, what's at stake here is the following. The city is, as a public agency, necessary here merely as a conduit. We are the issuer of bonds to be paid by the developer, because the law requires that there be a public entity involved in the issuance of the bonds. The city doesn't put up any security for this, there's no general fund or CRA money involved in this. We, as a formal matter, though, have to issue them so the developer can begin to repay them. Is that not correct?
That's correct, and I would again point out that we are relying upon credit enhancement guarantees that provide a AAA rating. Without those guarantees, I don't think we would be proposing this bond issue.
And, but the bond rating itself is relevant principally to those who would be on the receiving end of the bonds.
That's correct.
Because all they want to know about is that they're going to get repaid.
That's correct.
By the developer, not by the city, not by the CRA.
By the developer, the bank, and the Federal Home Loan Bank Board.
Mr. Wax? Glad that Mr. Fuhr clarified what exactly it is we're voting on. Mr. Walsh's comments are taken seriously. In fact, it's no secret that I personally sent the Capitol Records land transaction to the grand jury myself, because I thought it did involve perhaps criminal behavior and needed to be looked into. That is a very different issue from what we have before us, and our job is to separate out what we're voting on and what we're not voting on. And I simply can't connect the dots in the way that he did. This is a good project. Is this the old Rowan Building, what they used to call the Rowan Building?
That's correct.
I have a particular affinity for that. My first job when I came back from law school was in a law firm in the old Rowan Building, and that's where I practiced law for about five years before I ran for the city council. So I have a very special feel for that. And interestingly, what Ms. Goldberg talked about before in her eloquent statement as to urban planning and where it's appropriate to look to meet the housing needs in our city. When I first practiced law, I went to a law firm, and it was in the Rowan Building, and it wasn't even imagined that people would live in buildings like that. Now I think we realize that that's some of the best real estate possible in Los Angeles to provide housing for people. And so we've, this is a particularly good project, in my opinion, one that points the way in the same kind of way that Ms. Goldberg developed the remarkable project that we just had before us, in finding ways to meet the housing needs in our city and using some of the real estate downtown that was originally built for one purpose that can now, through the adaptive reuse, be used for another important purpose, is something that we ought to be supporting. And I just, I only spoke because I thought we are, the merits of this were colored by the comments of Mr. Walsh, who, ala I sympathize with him on his issues. We're talking apples and oranges here, and I think we have to be able to separate those out.
Mr. Burnson?
Yes, members of the council, while Mr. Walsh's comments may have some merit relative to some of the misuses that have taken place in the past. Apparently, this is a good project. Apparently, we should not judge the current activities of the CRA based upon history. I know that we have a tendency, the public has a tendency, and the press have a tendency to try to encapsulate everything that, for example, the MTA is today with what happened 10 years ago with people who weren't even on the board at that time, and the same thing is true with the people at the CRA. I had the dubious distinction of serving on the Blue Ribbon Committee for the Downtown Redevelopment Project back in 1975, I guess it was, and you were here at that time. Yeah, well, I wrote a minority report, not the majority report. But ironically, one of the things that I suggested was that instead of the buildings on Spring Street and on Broadway where the upper floors were vacant and the offices had pulled out, that we turn those into residential use. Everybody said, "We can't do that. The zoning laws don't permit it. We didn't have a mixed-use ordinance at that time." They said, "It's too costly to make the facilities available." Lo and behold, we finally come, here it is, almost 25 years later, that all of a sudden, all of a sudden, this is a good idea. How about that? Just like the double-decking the freeways. That was a suggestion that was made in a task force back in 1982 for alleviating some of the congestion. And all of a sudden, people are looking at these alternatives, and when do we look at them? Always after the fact. When it's too late and we already have a crisis, we look at some of the alternatives. But yes, we should pursue any investigation that deals with any wrongdoing with the CRA, and anybody responsible who's still around should be brought to justice for it. We also should seek more accountability in how, particularly how the assessments are done and the prices we pay for properties. I raised that question on a couple of occasions. But as far as this project and why we should support it, I think that's an entirely different matter. I think we have to give Mr. Sharlin and the current organization the opportunity to do a good job today. And let's not look over our shoulder other than to say, "Let's not make the same mistakes again." Thank you.
Ms. Goldberg?
Just a quick question, because I just can't remember the project. How many units are we talking about? Is it low, moderate, market rate? Is it combination?
Yes, this is a 20% affordable, 80% market project. Total 209 units.
Okay, thank you. And the 20% affordable, is that mod, low mod, very low?
It's 20% of the units at 50% of median.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else want to be heard? If not, we have 23 before us. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. The next item?
This is the time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
We're going to go into executive session, so let me call Candido Mars. Candido Mars?
Thank you, Mr. President, councilmembers. You know, Mr. President, this is kind of a sad week. You know, in 1993, I was here when Jackie Goldberg first attended her first council meeting. And Ms. Goldberg, even though you and I have disagreed on many issues, I love you. I think that you're an asset to this city, and I've sat here and listened to people, like the group that was just here, the people that were fired from the airport. There was one lady that called you an angel, and I agree with her. And I hope that everything goes well for you, and Tuesday's going to be a little sadder, but I'm glad that you have a new job going to, and good luck to you.
Thank you, Candido. John Walsh?
What we have in front of us with President Ferraro is proof of the power of prayer. In fact, I'll tell you exactly what happened. Mr. Holden, Councilman Holden led the Protestants in prayer for his miracle recovery. Mr. Savornich led the Orthodox Christians in prayer for his recovery, successful. Mr. Wax led the Jewish in prayer for his recovery. It was successful. And we had our Hispanic leaders here also, led Catholics in prayer. And last but not least, Jackie Goldberg led the atheists in prayer. And as a result of that, we have you here. We have you here, and things have calmed down. Because I want to tell you, the people that were sitting in your chair couldn't one quarter fill your chair. And I think if anybody here will tell you that, will tell you that's the fact. I'd like to point out that we assume that you wouldn't be crazy enough in this to create a new Councilwoman Delugatch. We are not interested in our district. We have Mr. Fuhr, who represents a portion of Hollywood, and we have Mr. Ferraro, who represents a portion of Hollywood. We would like you to be our honorary 13 councilmanic representatives. Please, let's not, Jackie Goldberg is not allowed to have two seats. The state of California says, "Let her be up there." And as far as the San Gabriel Valley is concerned, Mr. Fuhr, if you lose this election to Mr. Delgado, and he's a very, very strong candidate, you might as well move to the San Gabriel Valley, because you're dead in this state, in this city. I'd like to wish you all good greetings, and I want you all to go to the MTA. They have spent $10,000 on a three-story Christmas tree in their plaza. $10,000, while they paid us to go through a 32-day strike, and they're telling us they have a half a billion-dollar deficit. As far as the three-story tree, Christmas tree, you will read about it in the media. Because remember, the psychotic ravings of John Walsh last year become the political wisdom, conventional political wisdom of this year, and my psychotic ravings this year will become next year's political wisdom. Thank you.
John, thank you very much, and have a happy holiday. And now we're going to go into executive session? Let's clear the desk off while we clear the room.
Aye is in the case of Ultramar versus City of Los Angeles in the amount of $1,355,000. Chick, Fuhr, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Misakowski, Pacheco, Padilla, really, Thomas, Ferraro.
Aye.
11 ayes.
Okay, H is Lamson?
That's in the amount of $950,000. $950,000.
Okay, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. G, Ramirez?
In the amount of $135,000.
Any, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. F was continued until the 13th of December. E is Griffith?
In the amount of $425,000.
Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. D, Tony Scott?
In the amount of $7,600,000.
Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Harris?
That was in closed session.
And that's, no action on that one?
41 B is SEIU versus City of Los Angeles in the amount of $150,886.06.
And 0.06?
Yes.
Don't forget that 0.06. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Item A?
In the amount of $110,000, and that's Dalia Carpio versus City of LA.
Okay, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Yeah, what about 40? We take any action on 40?
That was in closed.
Yeah, and what about 39?
That was just a briefing.
Okay, okay, all those. See, so I'm glad you said that, because all of these items will go forthwith, because we're not going to meet next week. So be sure to forthwith everything. Okay, next item?
The desk is clear, Mr. President.
I got an adjournment motion for, would everyone please stand? Let me, Mr. Burnson asked me to adjourn in memory of Norman Rifkin, who passed away Sunday. He was a resident in the 5th District for most of his life. He died at the age of 72. His son, Alan, works for the Department of Transportation. He lives, he lives with his wife and son and daughter. That's all members. Jackie?
It's with extreme sadness that I ask that we announce, that we adjourn in memory of Carolyn Anagnos, who many of you know has been a fighter and a battler for progressive causes all of her life, battled a long time with heart disease on and off, and she finally succumbed to it recently. She and Eris have been involved in so many causes, from homeless advocacy to peace, civil rights, healthcare issues. It's really almost impossible to name all of the things that they did together. I don't have all of the details yet, but I will give them to the clerk when I get them. But I was grieved and saddened to hear of her passing, and I know that her loss will be felt not only by Eris, but by a very, very large number of friends and allies, and even opponents, who may have disagreed with them but were remarkably aware of their tenacity and their generosity and their efforts to try to make this world a better place. And I will miss her personally.
All members.
Yeah, all members on that, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, and I think that Councilmember Padilla and Pacheco would like to join on this, and Councilmember Holden. It's sad to report that one of the icons of the Latino political establishment has passed away, and that was Henry B. Gonzalez, Congressman from Texas. I had the pleasure of meeting him on several occasions, and he was normally at events put on by Southwest Voter Registration, or Naleo, and even Maldiv. He was someone who basically dealt with... He was someone who basically dealt with politics in an era that very few of us understood the difficulties, because they were the trailblazers. Henry B. served in Congress from nineteen sixty-one to nineteen ninety-eight, a reflection of the era of Congressman Roy Baugh. And he started as a city councilman in the city of San Antonio, where he raised his eight They were elected officials who had to set standards for many of us, because they were fighting battles that, to the majority, didn't make sense, but to the communities he represented, he was a hero and a spokesperson. He made his mark in the area of affordable housing and as an advocate for the poor. And he was one of those role models, again, that set standards for many of us, and I'm sorry to have to announce that he's no longer with us.
Yeah, all members on that, please. Mr. Holden? Okay, anybody else? Mr. Padilla?
Just to add a little bit to that, a German in memory of Henry B. Gonzalez, as Councilmember Hernandez said, he was eighty-four years old at the time of his passing, served in Congress for thirty-seven years, and prior to that, not only studied law, but started on the city council, just like some of us who are starting on the city council and moving on up. He also served in the state senate prior to Congress, but he was born in nineteen sixteen. And from the history that we know about him, he was born to immigrants from Mexico, and back in those days, back in those times, back in those communities, he wasn't shy to speak of the experiences he went through, not only of poverty, but of discrimination, and he carried those experiences with him into public service. And his accomplishments are very visible in and around San Antonio and other cities in Texas, not only with their convention center, his face on a number of murals, so from Hyatt Loe, he's leaving a legacy that's going to be remembered for a long, long time.
Anyone else? All right. Mr. Holden?
I'll reflect on Congressman Gonzalez. He was at the, serving at the twilights of an era of a guy named Bilbo Talmadge and the likes. And of course, he was there when we had our hero, Adam Clayton Powell, who was speaking for all the minorities, including women as well, in the U.S., and how they're being denied equal access to all the benefits that America could provide. I'm sure that it'd been very painful for the congressman at that particular time, given we'd just come through a number of wars that he could relate to. Born in nineteen sixteen, then he was around in the First World War, and of course, the Second, and then Korea and Vietnam and all. But, and the mortality, those who were killed in those wars, many of them were minorities, I know, and France, in the First World War, I see stories about the African soldier in France, how they were being honored and recognized and respected in France. They would come home to Georgia, where I was as a little boy, telling the stories about what happened to them there, how well they were treated, fighting for freedom for us here at home. And back home, it was altogether different. Same thing for Congressman Gonzalez, I'm sure, living during that time period. So we have a lot to remember, and we've overcome a lot, and yet, there's a big road ahead that we have to travel. And I see here that we very often do it together, notwithstanding the fact that we are on different sides of the issues from time to time. But we do coalesce for one thing, and that's freedom and justice for all. And we applaud, I applaud you guys, to you, not that.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Call the roll, please. This meeting is adjourned.